That passes two then. Our business is complete and consequently we're adjourned. The special meeting.
We're turning this one, right?
No, it's the other way around.
Oh.
We'll go with the next one.
Joe's turning this one.
Yes. Yeah, thanks. We will have now for the meeting of the committee of the whole call to order. The roll call.
Ms. Chenoweth.
Present.
Mr. Hayes.
Yes.
Ms. Huth.
Here.
Mr. Otto.
Here.
Ms. Pat.
Present.
Ms. Wyman.
Here.
Chair Whalen.
Here.
Are there any additions to the agenda? We have a staff report.
Just one item. We are working, I don't have anything ready tonight. It'll probably be on a fairly quick timetable. We are working on a development agreement that we're going to bring as soon as possible on the east side of Five Points, which is the Birch Admin Project, which involved redevelopment of the east side of Five Points. So, we're working on that. We don't have it ready for tonight, but it's going to come very quickly. So, I may call you all and let you know what's going on with that.
Does that include Yanqing and the Port Hill?
It only includes a portion of it, but the redevelopment area includes a larger area.
And the Marriott there?
Maybe.
Ms. Pat, yes.
Thank you. Since Mayor Sathefway is out of town, I'm bringing this up to our staff, and I did not know about this in time to get it on the agenda. So, there's an opportunity to vote, but I'm hoping if others express concern similar to mine, something can be done about this. There was a letter in a local newspaper, a newspaper called The Paper, saying that The Paper had applied for a table at the Sweet Corn Festival but was denied that because of some understanding that Urbana Business Alliance has with the News Gazette, that the News Gazette will be the only newspaper distributed at the Sweet Corn Festival. Since the city of Urbana is a sponsor of the Sweet Corn Festival, I think it would be inappropriate for any news media to be barred. I'm also concerned, I'm not a lawyer, but I'm concerned about whether prohibiting a newspaper from being distributed at a government-sponsored event is a violation of the First Amendment of the U.S. Constitution. And since when we each took our oath of office, we swore to uphold the Constitution, I particularly don't want us to violate it in this way. So, I would appreciate if Mr. Walden would look into this and see if you can work it out and whether The Paper is distributed at the city of Urbana's table or they have their own table, though I certainly think they should have their own table. I think we need to ensure that the city of Urbana is not party to any restriction of any press in any way at any event that we sponsor.
Be happy to look into it.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Wyman?
Yeah, I just want to echo those concerns. I appreciate Ms. Pat bringing those up. And my understanding is that any not-for-profit organization is allowed to participate by paying, in the Sweet Corn Festival, by paying fifty dollars and filling out an application form and, in addition, that for-profit organizations, and I'm not sure if The Paper, Newspaper, is a not-for-profit or a for-profit, but regardless, they certainly, any newspaper or any media organization should be allowed to participate. And again, appreciate Mr. Walden's expressed willingness to look into this issue, and I think I'll encourage other council members to contact the Sweet Corn Festival organizers, the Urbana Business Alliance, which I think is taking, is doing the main work in this to make sure that this issue is resolved so that no media is prohibited from participating in what's known as the best festival in Champaign, Urbana. Thank you.
Ms. Chenoweth.
I just, I want to underline what Ms. Pat and Ms. Wyman have said. I'm actually appalled. When I first heard this rumor, I thought it was completely false because it just couldn't be the case that a government-sponsored event like the Sweet Corn Festival, one actually which has a history of having our local papers be funders for that, for that community event, would actually agree to a contract with one of its sponsors to kind of give exclusive rights. Certainly, I don't think that is in the best spirit of what the Sweet Corn Festival represents. I do have a question, which is that I wanted to know whether or not UBA exclusively has been handling the contract with sponsors or whether or not our city legal department has had an opportunity to review in any way the contract. Okay, so.
The contracts are by the UBA without review of the city.
Okay. But it is the case that the city of Urbana is a funder for the Sweet Corn Festival?
Yeah, we're a primary funder.
Okay. And I'm wondering if at all possible we could get some response from your office, Mr. Walden, before our next meeting. Is that realistic?
Probably get it prior to that.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I'd say this smacks of Citizen Kane. Yes, Ms. Pat.
I hate to say my thing. I love the News Gazette, and I appreciate whatever it is that they are contributing to the Sweet Corn Festival. As a newspaper and advocate of free press, I would expect that the folks at the News Gazette would understand that the concern here and that something can be worked out to accommodate whatever it is that they want it accommodated while also ensuring access for all other media. So, I know you were just, your Citizen Kane comment was just, but this isn't about bashing UBA or bashing the News Gazette, it's just about keeping our noses clean and doing the right thing about a very important principle, which is freedom of the press. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess that's taken care of then. Any further staff reports? The minutes of the previous meeting, the July 28th Committee of the Whole, do we have a motion on those?
It's a move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Hayes, seconded by Ms. Wyman. Is there any deletions or additions? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That passes. Public input, and we have some comments from some thirsty folks here. We have Scott Gleason and Ian Goldberg would like to speak about the change in the time from 1:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. for the sale of alcohol in bars and nightclubs. Would either one of you gentlemen like to come up and speak?
Hello. Thank you for allowing us to speak. Just wanted to raise the issue. It was recently brought to my attention that the city of Urbana, I'm a little bit unclear, or I'm sorry, the city of Champaign, I'm a little bit unclear as to if they've already passed the change or if it is set to be passed, but I do know that it is set to take effect as of August 19th, that they will be changing their bar closing hours to 2:00 a.m. from the current 1:00 a.m. time, or the time that liquor can no longer be sold. And certainly, as a interested party with the Canopy Club, we are concerned about the competitive advantage that that would give to all of the establishments in Champaign and would hope that the city of Urbana would follow suit. And I'm particularly concerned about the impending timeframe for a couple of reasons, the most specific of which for my particular businesses is that being located on the campus as well and with all the students coming back into town, if it's a change that happens in Champaign and everyone's able to get used to the idea that in Champaign they can stay out longer and do more, it could set us up for a whole year. It's hard to change people's patterns once they get set up. So, if this could be addressed rapidly, I would appreciate that. I wanted to quickly address a couple of the concerns that had been brought up to me about this, and I would also put myself out there as more than willing to answer any questions or look at addressing any concerns should anybody have any. The couple that were raised originally were that some Urbana businesses in the past when this was brought up had said that they weren't necessarily interested in staying open later and that it may cause them, it would just cause them to have to stay at work longer. And I can understand that from some of the smaller businesses that maybe aren't as, don't keep their clientele as late. But by changing the ordinance here, you know, they would only, it would only be allowing us to compete with Champaign. The people who don't want to stay open would have that choice, and they're already going to be facing the increased competition from the bars in Champaign, and I don't think the rest of us in Urbana that would like to stay open later will compete anymore with them in an unjust manner. And another issue that was brought up is that oftentimes in the bar closing hours, there seems to be in certain residential areas commotion and such, and I would just suggest that obviously if Champaign has indeed already made the change or they are going to be, that regardless of if the Urbana businesses are allowed to stay open later or not, there's still going to be that same commotion because the citizens are just going to go to downtown Champaign or Campus Town Champaign and still come home later anyway. And I would even suggest that it would be my opinion that you would probably see a reduction in the number of what are commonly termed after-hours parties if the bar hours were made later because if people are in the bars later, there's going to be less of an inclination to want to go start a whole new party and stuff. It's a little bit easier to do that at 1:00 a.m. than when you start getting to 2:00 or 2:30 that they're getting out of the bars to kind of recreate a whole new event for people to go to. So, I think you would actually see a reduction in that kind of activity in the residencies. And I guess last I would just like to stress that, again, unfortunately, I was not informed of this, and it didn't seem like there's a whole lot of information out there about it happening in Champaign, but I've been told by numerous sources that it is, that it is indeed certainly happening on the 19th, and we would just ask that you act as quickly as possible to keep us in measure with our competitors.
Ms. Pat.
Thank you. Just a comment, I think, I'd be surprised if this had any impact on after-hours parties unless the bars are open until 3:00 a.m., 3:00 or 4:00 a.m. I think that would definitely do it because that is a big part of why there are after-hour parties. But I don't know if you can answer my questions if you don't know whether or not Champaign has passed it yet. I would guess if you're certain it's going to affect the 19th, they have already passed it, but I know they were talking about it. Do you know, whatever it is they passed, is this about, this is how, this is extending the hours that liquor can be served, right? Not just the hours that the bar is open?
Correct.
So, it would be right now, it's, you can serve liquor until 1:00 and you have to close at 1:30, and you think they've changed it to liquor served until 2:00 and closing at 2:30?
Actually, Champaign changed a while ago to being 1:00 and 2:00 o'clock, that they had to close and kick everybody out.
So, serving till 1:00 and then closing at 2:00?
Is what it currently is. And my understanding is that this now allows them to serve until 2:00. I'm not sure what they changed the time to, that everyone has to be out of the establishment.
Do you know, I realize this isn't your personal concern, but do you know if this is just for bars or is the, for the sale, would the sale of packaged liquor also be allowed till 2:00 a.m. under Champaign?
I don't know. I'll be one on that.
Okay. Our liquor commissioner is out of town, so I don't know unless, you know, our staff, I see Mr. Walden shaking his head, no. So, it's impossible for us to do anything before the 19th because that's next week. But that's something I, I'll look into. I'm sure others will be interested as well.
Are you, Mr. Glassman?
No, I'm Ian Goldberg, Assistant.
Oh, you're Ian Goldberg. Okay. I didn't ask you your name when you came up.
Okay.
Mr. Glassman, do you want to address this also?
Hello. Thanks for listening. My name's Scott Glassman. I will be opening a new establishment over here on Main Street, 115 West Main Street, where Jean Louis used to be. I've been having a bar and restaurant. And when I heard the news that Champaign was going to be able to stay open later, I mean, it's a big concern of mine because I haven't even started yet. A quick side note, I do know that Champaign cannot sell packaged liquor past midnight, even though their bars can sell till 1:00. I do know that. I don't know. That's the way they do it. But I would just like to stress the point that we should keep an even competitive edge with Champaign. If they can stay open an hour later, it's not like people would just come over here and then possibly leave at 1:00 to go over there for an extra hour. They might not even just make the trip altogether. And that's just a major concern of mine, and I think that to keep the competitive edge, we should be able to decide something in time when they're going to do their change.
Thank you, Mr. Glassman. Any questions, Mr. Goldberg? Sorry, no answer. Sorry. Mr. Glassman, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Huth. Yes. All right, I got it. Thank you. Okay. Well, that ends the public input. Is there any, yes, Ms.?
Just wanted to request that the clerk put on the next Committee of the Whole agenda, the issue of liquor sales as an agenda item, following the recommendation of Mr. Goldberg and Mr. Glassman, so that we can discuss this. Thank you.
Yes.
Since it appears that we may be operating in a condensed timeframe on this, if you have concerns about a possible ordinance change, for example, what time packaged liquor is sold or other matters related to this, could you email Steve, myself, and the mayor with those concerns? I would appreciate it.
You mean into the jury? Yes, Ms. Pat.
I was just going to say, you read my mind. I think that packaged liquor should be available for sale the same hours that the bars are open. But I also know that there are concerns that were alluded to among people in the industry, whether it's people who are selling packaged liquor, people in bars. And in the past, when we may change the liquor law, the mayor wanted to communicate with the various parties, so I don't want us to cut him off from doing that. He is the liquor commissioner, and he may want to do that. But I do think if there's any reason for, any rationale for restricting hours that liquor is sold that has to do with public places, and I just don't see why packaged liquor should not be available during the same hours that bars are open.
For the benefit of the two gentlemen who spoke, our next meeting of the Committee of the Whole, and that's what you're talking about, Ms. Wyman, right?
Yes.
Is in two weeks. So, we won't be able to discuss it until then, when we can get some answers from the administration. But, so it will be on the agenda then? So, okay. Thank you. That's the end of public input then. The next item on the agenda is ordinance number 2003-08-080. It's an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of an agreement with the State of Illinois Department of Transportation for street improvements. This is at University Avenue, US Route 45, near the intersections of Matthews Avenue and Goodwin Avenue. And if Mr. Gray will address us, I must say, in all of these cases that we talk about tonight, there's no fiscal impact on the city.
Correct. In this case, that's correct. Summary here, the response to the traffic impacts of the new 1,500 space parking deck at the southwest corner of Goodwin Avenue and University Avenue. It has been determined that there's a need to add eastbound right turn lanes on University Avenue at Matthews and also at Goodwin Avenue. At the intersection of Goodwin Avenue, there would also need to be some traffic signal modifications and an additional turn lanes in the south leg of that intersection. The work to be done is partially on our streets where we have jurisdiction, which are Matthews and Goodwin Avenue. The balance of the work is on University Avenue, which is IDOT's responsibility. There needs to be an intergovernmental agreement that IDOT needs to enter into, in this case with the city, where there's an identification of the work to be done and the sharing of the costs. There is, there are local costs incurred here, but this project is a project that the impacts are derived from the university's project, and they have rightfully taken on those local costs. And included in your packet tonight is a commitment letter from Mr. Dempsey, who has the authority on behalf of the university to commit such funds and care for all the various expenses that would be incurred. The balance of the IDOT agreement is fairly standard language that we see in other intersection work or other street-related work. For the most part, there have already been ordinances approved and in fact attached to the agreement. The city staff responsibility and role will be fairly minimal in this project. We would, on occasion, inspect and keep tabs on the work being done, but a daily engineering inspection would be done by a consultant who would be employed by the university to do the work. So, the improvements are needed, necessary for this traffic impact, and we've worked with the consultants for the university, worked with the university staff and with IDOT, and everything as far as we can tell is in order. And pending council approval of this agreement, then there would be the advertisement for bids and bid opening in, you know, weeks and months ahead. So, work would probably be started later this fall and can be completed next year.
Work over the winter?
They would suspend work during the middle of the winter, yes.
Any questions? Yes, Ms. Wyman?
If the parking, the parking garage is the one that goes all the way to Matthews, is that right?
Yes.
Right now, there's no sidewalk on the south side of University Avenue. Is there going to be one that's put in place?
Yes.
And it'll, will it be a, one of those paths like what, I guess is, I presume is going to happen on Goodwin Avenue and like what we have between Florida and Windsor on Race, or is it going to be just a regular sidewalk?
Actually, it's going to be the same width, I believe it's six feet wide, as what's across Beckman currently. It'll be set back further from the curb. So, if you can picture what is there in front of Beckman, it would be similar to that situation.
Okay.
It'll be a wider than a four-foot sidewalk, but not, it won't be a 10-foot wide sidewalk.
And do you know when that's going to be in place?
The deck work is, I believe, scheduled to be completed next fall, so.
So, we won't see a sidewalk till?
It'll be a while. Yeah, it'll be after the superstructure work is completed.
So, after next fall?
No, I'm sorry. The completion is next fall, so it would certainly be before.
Okay.
Next fall. It would be one of the last things that would occur because of all the heavy equipment that's necessary to build the parking deck.
Thank you.
Any further questions? I have one. Mr. Gray, in Mr. Dempsey's letter, he says that the city will pay, lay the dough out, and then the university will reimburse the city in a timely manner. What does that mean with the university, a timely manner?
Less than 30 days.
Really? So obtuse in your speech when it comes to paying.
Actually, although the letter states that, it's going to be kind of a reverse situation. The state is going to be paying the city. The city, in turn, would pass that money on to pay the contractor, and the university, as I understand it, would be employing the contractor. So, I think he's just being extra careful or whatever as to, you know, that there is no out-of-pocket expenses by the city.
Okay, thanks. Do we have a motion to send that to council?
So moved.
Second.
Removed by Ms. Pat, seconded by Ms. Wyman, to send this to council. The clerk, please call a roll.
I don't think a roll call is necessary.
You don't think so?
Not on a, because we're the committee of the whole, I think all you need is just all in favor.
I think you're right. I recall. All those in favor sending this to council signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That passes. The next item is ordinance number 2003-08-081, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of certain real estate. That's 1310 West Dublin Street.
Evening. 1310 West Dublin Street was brought to my attention by a Realtor this past spring, and it's in the King Park neighborhood. The cost would be about $12,000, which we already have budgeted in the home and CBG budgets for a possible use for new construction activities. If the city were to acquire this property, we would have four vacant lots eligible to be built on fairly quickly. Either, we could either do something like the previous home build programs or the Eats program right now, or we can donate them to Habitat for Humanity, but the donation wouldn't happen until a later date, until something was finalized on that. Again, the cost would be $12,000. We've had administrative costs of about $500 so far. So, do you have any questions?
That $12,000 comes from the home?
The home and/or CBG budgets, yes.
Okay. Ms. Wyman?
Moved to send this to council with the recommendation for approval.
Second.
Removed by Ms. Wyman, seconded by Ms. Pat, to send this to council. All those in favor, Mr. Hayes?
What kind of conversation did you have with the Realtor before you decided that the city was going to buy this property?
The Realtor brought it to my attention, who I've known for several years, actually. The owner actually lives out in the east coast, North Carolina, I believe it is, and the house that was on the adjacent property with it was sold to somebody else, and they just had the vacant property, which they were wanting to get rid of. I know their original estimate, what the owner was wanting, was about $25,000, but the praise value didn't come out near that far. I believe it came out to like $10,000, and yeah, we agreed upon that $12,000 cost, the price.
The only reason I bring it to your attention because at the time that the 1308 was being sold, 1308 and 1310 were on the same parcel. And so, when the individual went to, the Realtor re-drew the lines on the property, and the owner did not get both pieces of property, but they told him that he could have it if he paid an extra amount of money, which he felt like he didn't want to do. So, I'm not, I'm not one to block this, but I'm just showing you some of the kinds of neighborhoods when people, you know, think they don't have anything.
Yeah, that, the Realtor did not mention that to me, so.
I don't have a policy on.
Was there any other interest expressed in the property?
Not as far as I know.
Well, we need a motion to send that to council?
I believe the motion and second have already been made.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That passes. The next item on the agenda is ordinance number 2003-08-082, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of an Urbana Home Consortium Community Housing Development Organization Agreement, Homestead Corporation of Champaign-Urbana, Toto operating fiscal year 2003 and 2004. What did you say?
Under the home program, up to 5% of our allocation can be used for operating funds for our Totos, of which Homestead and Urban League Development Corporation are. This agreement's only for Homestead, and this agreement would set aside monies, a little over $31,000, to help pay. over $31,000, to help pay staff salaries, travel, training, just basic costs to keep their doors open. So the budget, you can see in Exhibit 1 of the agreement, shows basically where the funds are going. Their projects for this year, you know, they're still looking at, you know, continuing on with their existing rental programs and finishing up the Eads subdivision for us, which they are the current developer. So, do you have any questions?
No questions. Ms. Wyman?
Oh, I was...
Mr. Hayes?
Sorry.
Question? In the, in the information we have, Homestead is supposed to be the overall manager of this project, and they also mentioned that they're going to try to, as hard as possible, include minorities and females in the hiring process. And I'd like to know, you know, how that's going to be done, because there've been situations in the past where, I can't prove it, but, you know, people come to me and tell me that, you know, they've called Homestead or the city, they get information, and the calls have not been returned. So, you know, you have a lot of people who are unemployed.
Okay, if you have any specific suggestions, feel free to contact us, and if you have any, Tim, I don't know whether you want to address some of this or not.
The only thing I can say is that when we hired the general contractor, we emphasized the fact that we were, would be definitely in favor of him hiring or looking at subcontractors that represented the minority groups in our community. I know there are some minority persons employed on the job. I've seen them at the work site. A roofing contractor, for one. The question he asked me about people contacting me, I referred them to the general contractor since he was hiring the subcontractors. I had nothing to do with hiring the subcontractors. And so I would just refer them to the, the general contractor for contact.
I would just like to see a little more, you know, concentrated effort on, on both sides to try to get, you know, some of the minorities, you know, working on the project.
Ms. Pat?
Jim, have you been contacted by, are there some forms that you've had to fill out for our human relations office or for the city with regard to equal employment opportunity compliance so far? Has anyone asked you for that?
I don't believe so.
Yeah, they were actually, they were in the bid documents when you submitted your bid for the Eads project.
Oh, that's right. There is a form, and we did sign the form, that we make every effort to hire minority contractors or minority workers on the job, if I'm not mistaken.
There's some type of follow-up. I don't know if it's about your, I don't know nothing about this, whether it's your employees at Homestead or if it's the people on the contract, though I think if the contract's over a certain amount, I don't think that's a very high dollar amount, so I think this would be covered, that the city does require some reporting back on the number of females, the number of minorities working on these jobs. Isn't there, do you know, Mr. Lushen, is there something like that that...
There is, I know, I know, there is some HUD reporting that I have to do for this work, but I'm not exactly sure of for the city's documentation, but I can check on that tomorrow.
And does the HUD reporting include a number of minority employees?
Yeah, they look at, actually, it's the minority women on businesses. They're not looking at all the individual employees, but the business owners.
So if all the business owners were white males, but they employed people, if they employed female or minority workers, that would not...
That would not show up.
...even come up in the report. Well, we do something here at the city with some level of contracts, so I guess we can look into that.
Okay. Just a second. In, in the construction work that I've been involved in, generally there, if it's federal money or, or state money, there is a requirement, a legal requirement, that, that there be some minorities employed. Is that part of this at all?
I believe there is, and that's what the forms that we had, had put in the bid documents, talking about who the contractors were and everything, what their minority breakdown as far as employees went.
And that's what the bidding firms have to report that?
Yes.
American Indian and et cetera, et cetera?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that is going to be a part of our, that's a part of the package?
When they bid the, the jobs, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you. We need a motion?
Moved to send this to council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
And moved by Ms. Wyman and seconded by Ms. Chenoweth. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That passes. The next item is ordinance number 2003-08-083, an ordinance authorizing the sale of certain real estate, 914 West Eads Street, and rather lengthy packet on that.
Indeed, and if it's okay, we'll also speak to the, the next ordinance that's related. We've kind of got one memo for those two agenda items. So yes, this evening, we wanted to talk about amending the Eads at Lincoln Home Buyer Program and conveying 914 Eads to Homestead Corporation. Back in January 29 of 2003, we entered into an agreement with Homestead to complete the Eads at Lincoln subdivision, and we've attached a copy of that. And when we did that, Urbana School District still had 914 Eads, and we expected a house to be built on that lot, and plans had changed. They'd conveyed that lot back to the city, and we'd like to convey it to Homestead Corporation so that it could be included in the Eads at Lincoln Home Buyer project and inserted into the project, if you will, while there's contractors in the area, while Homestead's still managing the project. We believe there's economies of cost and time to do that. The, the contract and ordinance to convey the properties identical to the other instruments we've used for the Eads at Lincoln project, as well as other, other projects, basically at no cost. If you don't build the house, we get the land back. We also indicated we'd have an affordability period associated with the home-funded project, and there'd be a land restriction that spells out a 10-year affordability period on that piece of property. We talked to CDC about both the conveyance and the amendment, and they both recommended that you look affirmatively at, at both these documents. And then I'll quickly outline the proposed changes or amendments to the contract for the Eads at Lincoln Home Buyer Program. The First Amendment is in Section 3, we would change the dollar amount. We'd increase it by $39,800, and would thereby change the total home investment from 213,177 to 252,977. We'd also reference 0304 home funds, since we're using those funds in the project, increase the number of lots from four to five. Amendment number two in Section 4, again, we'd, we'd restate the amount of money in the project and the number of units to be constructed. We'd insert a development fee of $5,000, a management fee of $1,000, and down payment assistance would be provided up to $18,000, and we'd keep that sliding scale of payment that's sort of income-sensitive. It would go down as income went up. And then the, this last provision, we thought about this a lot. We wanted to make this last project, even though it's an add-on at the end, to basically give them the same level of subsidy, if you will, for the other five previous Eads homebuyers. So we provided where they could be assisted by as much as $9,500, which would create an equitable arrangement for the $7,500 the other homebuyers received from Federal Home Loan Bank, and $2,000 provided by state, used to be DECA, Department of Employment Opportunity, I believe. But then we, we end that paragraph saying, you know, however, we reduce that, that amount of proposed subsidy by the amount that Homestead and the homebuyer might be able to bring to the project. For instance, a lot of the member banks and, a lot of the banks in town have a program called Home Buyer Plus. They might be able to secure as much as $4,000 through that program. Jim Rose might be able to get the additional $2,000 from the state agency. Now that makes the difference, only $3,500 that we have to, to use. So we wanted to be equitable and provide them every opportunity to, to reach those or have those same subsidy and assistance levels. Amendment item number three, again, changing the number of units. Four is housekeeping by changing the dollar amounts. And then we outline the details there, about $27,500 is the subsidy levels, if you will, professional fees, management fees, escrow and financing. And we include a determination date of, of March 31. The options we recommend, they're basically approval and approval with changes or to not approve. And the fiscal impacts, we note that we're going to use, we'd like to use 0304 home funds. We've got it a lot budgeted for that. By using the $39,000, excuse me, $800, that would leave a balance of some $73,000. We also note that, you may recall a few months ago, Homestead returned $35,000 in home money from their rental projects, and if you would, we could sort of backfill this line item in the course of a fall amendment that we do to our annual action plan. It would just sort of offset the impact of this to the, to the home budget. And of course, the property to be transferred at no cost. So that's a summary of the, of the ordinances.
I see, and there is no fiscal impact on the city?
Right.
We need a motion to send this again. Any questions? Motion?
Moved to send both items eight, that is, ordinance number 2003-08-083, an ordinance authorizing the sale of certain real estate, 914 West Eads Street, and ordinance number 2003-08-084, an ordinance approving an amendment to a certain Urbana Home Consortium Community Housing Development Organization Agreement with Homestead Corporation, Eads at Lincoln fiscal year 2002, 2003, to council with recommendation for approval.
It's removed. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Huth. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That passes. The next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 2003-08-019R, a resolution amending the City of Urbana Tenant-Based Rent Assistance Program description. And there are some amendments that Ms. Pat has offered to us. Would you like to, I guess we should first of all make the motion?
Maybe we should hear the staff report? I'd like to request that we hear the staff report first, before a motion is made.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Wyman.
Yes, interesting, considerable background of the program. We noted it was developed as a pilot back in 1995, a tenant-based rent assistance program, and in '96, council adopted guidelines and procedures that we called the program description. Basically, the idea there was we funded a transitional housing program, folks coming out of transitional housing could get another two years of rental assistance through TBRA, in hopes that would lead to self-sufficiency at the end of that additional two years of assistance. We've had limited participation, and we note that maybe some of the reasons might be it provides assistance for only two years versus something that's more long-term and permanent. We do require case management, and other rental assistance programs may not. We note that there's a lot of turnover at transitional housing facilities, and sometimes it makes it a challenge to keep people aware of the program. And also, there's always been a limited amount of money in the program, and that also might diminish interest. We've attached a summary of, you know, demographics, if you will, of our program participants, their length of stay, et cetera. In that, we funded an additional $40,000 of home money into the TBRA program in last year's annual action plan, rather this year's 0304. We thought it would be good to revisit the program guidelines. So we've attached sort of an edited version, if you will, of the TBRA program description, and a quick summary of some of those proposed changes include, in Section, Section 1, under Purpose and Use, we would include homeless and special need populations as a population that be eligible to be served. And we note or refer to the con plan, if you will, and that listing of, of populations is pulled from the con plan, and they would be, be eligible for tenant-based rent assistance as a homeless special needs population. We've included housekeeping language that the availability of TBRA is contingent on the amount of home funds, and the rate of utilization earlier in the document indicated a fixed number of units, and that's not practical in the fluid nature of, of the program. Turning the page on 3 of 5, we've inserted the definition of special needs populations under the definition section. Program design, we just made a program note that we don't ever want to use home funds to provide case management as it's ineligible, so that's just a clarification. Under eligible households on 43, we added Prairie Center and Developmental Services Center as persons that would have special needs population, persons that could be helped. One note here, going back and doing a second overview, we found a housekeeping error that somehow men's safe house and women's safe house were included in the memo to council back in '96, and it's even on our application, but it was never put into the program description. So as a housekeeping matter, we'd like to add men's safe house and women's safe house. We would change the length of stay in a TH program from three to, six to three. We'd also include the term social service agency as providers for case management, to be clear that we wouldn't have to be our internal case management, but the referring agencies could provide that. On 50 is simply being consistent about leaving Prairie Center and Developmental Services in, in the mix under 62 eligibility. Again, we include Prairie Center and DSC as eligible organizations, if you will. Interesting to note, CDC looked at this for two months and had a very spirited discussion about how to make the program better. Basically, a lot of ideas, but some of the more concrete ones were under pay, under Section 30, under program staff. We would note that the Transitional Housing Coordinator, Ella, who is with us tonight, would simply be responsible for case management oversight, because she, she may not provide case management. It's just a clarification. Under 60, administration of the waitlist. CDC tasked us to create a more logical, detailed sequence of events about the waitlist, and we provided some more detail. Just put it in writing. I think everyone kind of assumes how first come, first served waitlist would work, but we put some detail to it. And the two other paragraphs, the ending here, under the background, were some marketing ideas. We talked about case management being, you know, some sort of a negative to maybe talk to them about more advocacy and support, but maybe that would help, as well as maybe creating application dates that would create dates certain by which people could sort of anticipate submitting something. We didn't include those as recommendations per se, but they might be marketing ideas or, or program awareness ideas. And lastly, a housekeeping error at 100, just including language that was omitted in the earlier documents. At the conclusion of CDC, again, members thought that awareness and continued analysis of the program dynamics and gathering feedback might be the best thing to help us run a better program. One more piece of background, if it's okay to interject now, regional planning sent this... Regional Planning sent us a piece, just a little information about the tremendous demand that's put upon their rental resources, if you will. And then, Mr. Whalen, as you mentioned, Councilperson Pat has shared some thoughtful ideas about how to create even maybe greater eligibility parameters, if you will, that might address some of the more critical needs for rental assistance. We took a look at this as staff before we left for the day, and just to make sure that we didn't see any home HUD rules or requirements that we might run into, and staff thought that it was all eligible and inappropriate. So we would recommend, we would concur with these recommendations, if you will. And the fiscal impact wrapping up, again, we budgeted the money, it's there. We just want to make a better program out of it.
Thank you for that explanation. Any questions? Yes, Ms. Pat?
I have a question.
We need a motion then. Ms. Pat?
I move to rescind the resolution to seek counsel with a recommendation for approval and making the changes that I outlined in the memo that I circulated to everyone and adding Men's Safe House and Women's Safe House, as Mr. Gruy requested, to the list of social service agencies, transitional housing, referenced in Sections 4.3 and 6.2. So moved.
It's been moved by Ms. Pat and second by Ms. Wyman.
Thank you.
Ms. Pat?
If I could speak to you, just to explain it briefly, the changes, excuse me, that I'm proposing are two, well, actually, there are three changes. One small one is to add Regional Planning Commission to the agencies that can refer special needs homeless persons and to whom program participants can turn for a possible case manager. That's one change. The second change is, well, actually, this is what explains what we have right now. Right now, the only people who are eligible to, for these tenant-based rent assistance vouchers, I'll call them, I don't know if that's exactly the right term, but for tenant-based rent assistance, are persons who have lived in transitional housing for at least three months and are in good standing. And so the second change is to eliminate the three-month period and to make any applicant households living in transitional housing who are in good standing with their transitional housing be eligible. And the third change, which is really the biggest one, is to add to the population eligible for participation in this program, Urbana households with at least one child under the age of 18, with household income below the poverty level, if the household is at risk of becoming homeless because the cost of renting utilities exceeds 50% of household income. When we first created this program back in 1996, we thought there'd be tremendous demand, and so at the recommendation of the staff, we limited the eligible client population to a pretty small group that we felt would still tax our resources. As we've learned over the course of the last seven years, that's not true. We've had the embarrassing situation of thousands, or hundreds at least, sometimes over 1,000 people out in the community being in need of assistance but not being eligible for our program because we defined it in a way that so few people were eligible. Just give you two statistics, and one was in the memo, and that is that after a long time of the Housing Authority keeping their waiting list for Section 8 rent subsidies closed, they opened the list just for two weeks, July 1st to July 15th. Well, it wasn't widely publicized, although they did make people aware of it, and in that two-week period, 1,339 households applied for Section 8. That just gives you a little taste of how much need there is out there. The Housing Authority estimates that in the near future, the foreseeable future, they will be able to serve about 30 to 40 of those households. So that still leaves 1,300 individuals or families in Champaign County who are in need of some assistance with paying their rent. And I don't know if all of them would be eligible, but even if half were eligible, it's still more than could ever be met. The information that Diane Nesbit sent over from Regional Planning Commission was at my request. The Regional Planning Commission administers homeless prevention funds in the form of first month's rent for people who are homeless and money to stop eviction, similar to the program that the township, Cunningham Township, had when we had more money to do that, where folks contacted Regional Planning Commission when they're facing eviction, and if they meet certain income guidelines, then they can get some assistance. In the last year, I don't know how many applicants they had, but RPC helped 218 families, 57 of whom were Urbana residents. So there, in one year, were at least 57 families, that's 10 times the number that we could probably serve with our program, who were facing eviction because they could not afford their rent. I am hopeful that if we add the group of people who are at risk of becoming homeless because renting utilities exceed 50% of household income, that we will be able to actually prevent some people from being homeless, rather than waiting till they become homeless, lose most of their belongings and are in a shelter, and that we'll also be able to make timely use of the small amount of money we do have for tenant-based rent assistance so that we can, well, make use of those dollars as we intended when we first created this program.
Ms. Wyman?
Yeah, I want to express my appreciation for Ms. Pat bringing this motion forward. I think it is certainly a strong concern of, I'm sure, of the entire council, as well as our community, in trying to prevent homelessness. And what better way to do that than to not require that a family first become homeless, be evicted, perhaps ruin their credit rating and other chances for eligibility for, to be able to rent again before they're eligible for a program like the Tenant-Based Rent Assistance Program. And so I think that this addition of allowing families who have at least one child under the age of 18 and are at income below the federal poverty level, as well as a risk of becoming homeless because the renting utilities exceed 50% of their income, to be eligible, I think is going to be important, again, in trying to use our resources as wisely as possible and not taxing the shelters more than is absolutely necessary. So I certainly support this, and again, appreciate Ms. Pat's work on bringing this forward. Thank you.
Mr. Otto?
I just had a question about the chart on the back of the page of the memo. Is this a summary of people who are currently in the program or people who have participated in the program?
People that have.
Oh, okay. So basically, once the people have been in, the people that are indicated as having been in the program for two years are basically no longer in the program.
It's a two-year window?
Right. Very good. Thanks.
I have a question. There is a specific inclusion of the elderly here.
Mm-hmm.
I noticed that in your recommendations for the-
Special needs populations.
Special needs population.
Yes, sir.
I see. And that's, is that, when you say elderly, what do you mean?
I think HUD defines that as over 62. Yeah, okay.
Over 62?
Yes, sir.
Old duffers. Okay. We need a motion to send this to council.
I believe the motion's already on the floor.
Oh, I think so. Thank you. Old duffer. Yes, Ms. Chenoweth?
I have a brief question. Based on Mr. Gruy's statements about seniors being eligible, the change that Ms. Pat is making would actually pretty much exclude seniors from the tenant-based, the rent assistance program. Is that correct, Ms. Pat?
No. My proposal adds another demographic group to eligibility, does not, so it does not eliminate anything that the staff was proposing. Just take the entire staff proposal and add, actually, two more groups, and that is people in transitional housing who've been there fewer than three months and the families with children. So the idea isn't to put groups in competition with each other, it's just when you've got money to help five to 10 people, five to 10 households, and years go by and you can't get rid of them all, obviously, we need to add some more folks to the eligible pool. And that's, and I chose families with children as, who are at risk of being homeless, because I personally think that's the highest priority. But everyone else who the staff is recommending be eligible would also be eligible.
Okay. Thank you for your clarification.
Well, then, any further questions? Then, all in favor of sending this to council, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It passes. I believe the next issue is adjournment.
Yay.